Okay, we will reconvene into open session. Um, we have two changes to the agenda. They're actually additions. We are gonna have 5.51. We're gonna hire middle school basketball coaches. And 5.52 is cheerleader co-op. So, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, um, public comments. Dan Lindgren.
Hello, thank you for letting me be here tonight. I just wanted to talk briefly about the state of the golf course out here. I know it has been discussed in building and grounds, but uh, there hasn't been much information that has gone out on that there. The condition has deteriorated considerably over the last two years, and I was just wondering what the board's stance is on that, or if we are going to allow it to go the way of the tennis courts and the junior high recreational area with that there. Because that is a very valuable, in my opinion, a very valuable asset to the community. Uh, it is very noticeable to the community of what the condition is out there. And uh, I guess from my standpoint, I would like to know, and I think the general public in general would like to know. I've been approached by several people about that. I'm assuming that some of you have been at some point along the way, although the people that have talked to me have not said that they have gotten a response from anyone that was satisfactory to them. So I guess that's what I'm asking, is what is the board's position on the golf course? Uh, what we are gonna do with that? Uh, and why, why we're in the position that we are in?
Can I ask-
Thank you.
Can I ask a supplemental question?
Sure.
Dan, you've seen the greens.
Yes.
Are they fixable?
Four of the five are, uh, very much so. I do not understand why they have not been getting taken care of. I understand the bigger issue with the number one green. That is a very difficult green to maintain, because that is built as a more traditional green that you would see on golf courses. So that has to have a lot of attention given to it all the time. Now that one, uh, obviously has not been getting much water. I know the water is off now. That's what normally happens here. I see the meter is gone, that's, so that's a normal thing that happens every year. But obviously wasn't getting much water before that. So any progress that may have been happening with that over the summer really has been destroyed now. So that one's really in a state of where you're potentially gonna have to rebuild that, skim it off, and restart over again with that, if you want to have a decent green out there again.
Thanks.
Do you want to be contacted to further discuss this?
Yes, I would like that.
Okay. You want to take care of that? Okay. We'll move on to the consent agenda items. We need to approve the minutes of the September board meeting.
I'll make that motion to approve minutes of September board meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the September board meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries. Now we need to approve the minutes of the October 16th Athletic Committee meeting.
I move to approve those meetings, or those minutes.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the October 16th Athletic Committee meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries. Financial reports, Holly.
Okay. So as of September 30th, our balance in our general fund is $1,269,585.22. In the capital projects fund, it is, our balance is $107,826.62. And in our employee, retired employee benefits, um, fund, the balance is $610,973.62. And I looked over the rest of it, and I move to approve the financial reports.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve the financial reports. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say no. Motion carries. Now we have a presentation from the art club by Mary Crowsey.
So, Ms. Crowsey is our middle school, high school art teacher.
Mm-hmm.
Um, is interested in starting an art club. For middle school and high school, or high school?
For high school right now.
Okay.
We'll see how that goes.
Alrighty.
But I have 13 students that are interested, and um, they want to work on personal projects. They'd like to learn some new skills and possibly work on some community projects, do some projects in school. So we're thinking about doing some murals. Um, we'd like to take some field trips. So we're gonna go to the Minneapolis Institute of Art, and they're also liking to do some community field trips, possibly the Woodson Art Museum. Um, let's see, there's also the Clark County Art Center. So that would be local. And for fundraising, we're looking at creating calendars and display their art in the calendar and do greeting cards. And then we're also looking at printing artwork on shirts and mugs and things like that.
Great.
Okay.
Any questions? Mr. Crowsey? Okay. So you said you were gonna do fundraising. Is that gonna go towards your field trips and stuff?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Alright.
Thank you very much.
Now we'll have some discussion and possible action on the creation of an art club.
So, uh, the reason that it's coming to the board is that this would be an extracurricular activity. Um, and correct, you'd be not so much during a school day, you'd be before, after school and, and things like that, so.
It'd be after school. And we're looking at four to five times a month.
Okay.
Do a rotation, so that I can get more students involved.
So, Ms. Crowsey would be the advisor, um, and then that would fall on our extracurricular, um, pay scale. Don't know where it'd fit right yet. Um, and that would all deal with hours and, and how much there would be involved with it, so. And that's why it's coming to the board to have them, have you guys approve it. If we didn't have anything like that, then we'd just approve it. So, as a principle. But with that, then we need your approval, okay?
I move to approve the creation of the art club.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the creation of the art club. Is there any discussion?
I'm just curious if there are any other schools that have art clubs nearby that you are aware of.
I'm not sure.
Okay. Okay. And maybe-
Get them together.
And maybe that's something Mr. Lindner can check with other superintendents in his meeting, just to find out. I mean, that would be a way possibly to, for our students to see what their students or their clubs are doing as well. The other thing, and I'd just like to point out, is that every time we go down to the state school board convention, they have a display of art. And I'm not sure what the criteria is for that, but I'm sure they have to compete in, you know, various contests and, and be the highest scoring. But it, it's always interesting to see that, you know, the art displays down there. So just something to keep in mind.
Is that in Madison?
In Milwaukee. Yeah, usually in January.
Anybody else, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of creating the art club? Signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed say no. Congratulations, we now have an art club.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, review and approve the 24-25 budget.
Okay, you, um, on board docs, you have an updated version of the budget from Monday night. There was some changes. Uh, and where the changes come from are, um, like we talked about is those private voucher that came through on Monday. Um, that is $122,000. For any student that chooses to go to a private school outside of our district, so. Even in our district, so. That is the difference from the other, from Monday night.
I move to approve the proposed budget for the 24-25 school year.
Second. Hey, we have a motion and a second to approve the 24-25 budget. Is there any discussion?
So there's one correction at the bottom, where it says total school levy, uh, for 24-25. That number, after we add that budget of $50,000 to Community Services Fund 80, um, it will be $2,623,494, 491.
So you're putting $50,000 in the community service, or community fund?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, is everybody good with that? Okay, all those in favor of approving the 24-25 budget? Signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed say no. Motion carries. Now we need to set the 24-25 tax levy.
So that levy will be $2,623,491, which is a mill rate of 7.87. When we talked referendum, it was slightly above eight is what we called three. Eight-four, I think, I remember on our scenarios, I looked up today, so.
Okay.
You, I did report Monday that it was 7.4, alright? But that was, we did not have that $122,583. That was not in there, because we, these are the, this is revenue limit sheet that was sent to the paper 10, 12 days ago, and that's what we had to go off of. So, Monday I got that number on school vouchers. So that comes, that we have to, we have to deal with that, alrighty? It's out of our pocket.
So can we have a motion to set the tax levy?
I move to approve the tax levy, 7.87.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to set the tax levy at 7.87. Is there any discussion?
I think we need to actually, that was the mill rate. I think we need to specify the-
The 2 million.
2,623,491. So, I guess just a friendly amendment to it, to include those words. So you, I don't, I think as long as you're agreeing to add those words, it's fine.
Yes, I agree.
Okay, so the motion is, the tax levy would be 2.623,491, with a mill rate of 7.87. 7.87. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say no. Motion carries. Now we have the reading of the NEOLA policy categories. 3,000 is professional staff and 4,000, which are the support staff.
So this, once again, will be a first reading. And when we're all done, we will have a second reading and approve everything at that time. Um, right now, we are working on six student, yeah, student, uh, policies, okay? So we got, we met, we have probably three quarters way through it. And the three of us, three administrators are gonna meet and finish that up. And there is probably cellphone, couple ones that we will need to sit down and look at a little bit more thoroughly, so. But this is all for professional teachers and our support staff.
So do we need to approve the first reading?
Do a, do a first reading and then, yep, and we move forward. I make a motion to approve the first reading of the NEOLA policy categories, 3,000 and 4,000.
I'll second it.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the NEOLA policy categories, 3,000 and 4,000. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say no. Motion carries. Okay, uh, 5.51, hire middle school coaches.
Okay, my recommendation is that we hire from the Athletic Committee. Recommended also, um, Mark Reeth and Nick Shluganoff as our middle school basketball coaches.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to hire Mark Reeth and Nick Shluganoff as middle school basketball coaches.
Boys' basketball.
Boys' basketball. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say no. Motion carries. Now, 5.52 is cheerleader co-op. We have one girl that wants to come over from Greenwood. And she are here, so.
Motion to approve.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the cheerleader from Greenwood to come over for the co-op. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say no. Motion carries. And we need to hire a food service assistant.
So we did have a, a food service assistant leave us. So my, Lisa Mahoney did go through, had a couple applications. Interviewed him, and my recommendation, and her recommendation, is that we hire Rhonda Werman as part-time food service assistant.
I move to approve hiring Rhonda Werman for the food service assistant.
Is there a second?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve Rhonda Werman as a food service assistant. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say no. Motion carries. Now we need to discuss and take possible action on an athletic trainer.
I'm just gonna recommend that we, we have a shared agreement with Greenwood to share an athletic trainer. Um, as of right now, I would, we don't know schedules. We don't know how much we would need her. I would say that, um, the two ADs and possibly the two administrators sit down and figure that out. Um, I, in talking to Mr. Green, um, their, their range is wide to a few hours, day, couple days, halftime. So that is something that we would look at and figure that out.
So we're looking at a 6603 agreement with Greenwood on this?
Would be a shared, shared service or staff.
So when we do a 6603, are we, um, splitting up her, basically her hourly wage and her benefits then?
On however we need. So if we need her for one day out of the week, let's say 20%. However you run it through the, then we would pay 20% of, of that, so. I make a motion to give authority to the administrator to set up a 6603 percentages with Greenwood for an athletic trainer.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to set up a 6603 agreement with Greenwood on an athletic trainer. Is there any more discussion?
I guess I would like, like it to be through the school year until the end of the spring, sports season, and then for the Lowell School Board to reevaluate the shared position, or to determine whether or not we're gonna continue that or if we look at hiring or-
Okay. Do you want to amend your motion to that?
Amend or add?
Or add? You can-
Add.
Add that in?
Yes, you can add that in.
Is there any-
I think we reevaluated, um, the 66 would be, would end anyway, because then if you do it, you'd do a new one for next year. But I would say the evaluation, yeah, evaluate the, how that's going. So then we don't need to add that? We can just have the 6603 end in April?
I'm good with that.
Yep. Is there anybody else? Any more discussion? All those in favor of approving a 6603 agreement with Greenwood for an athletic trainer? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say no?
No. And I'm not voting no, because I don't want an athletic trainer. I'm voting no, because I don't agree with the process we took to get here.
So noted. Okay, um, we need to discuss and take possible action on a counselor mentor.
So, two things here. We have a, a brand-new school counselor, um, for, or K-12. We have two new principals. We have a new, um, middle school, high school secretary. They all work together, and everything's new to them. And I'd, I would recommend, um, hiring Mrs. Shear, Becky Shear, for a limited amount of time per week, um, as a mentor to not only, um, Maya, our school counselor, but even to maybe help with, um, scheduling with our principals and Maya. Um, just because it's all new. Um, we also have, um, where she is very good with, um, college after-school, um, applications and scholarships. That, this is the first, first time around for our new counselor, and I just want to make sure everything is done and that we're not taking a long route of having her do all this. And we could have had a, help her, have someone help her work through it maybe more quickly, more efficiently. Um, and also, um, we just found that there is a DPI grant available that we will be applying for that would possibly cover some of this cost for this, this mentor. So that is what we'll be looking into and applying for.
Okay. So we'd be looking at, starting like now and going through April? Or March, or when?
I would say November, right away, November start, and move from there. I would, I would go through April, because you have scholarships, you know, that are coming up. That, that's a big, big time, because May is when, when they have their banquet and, and that, so I would say through May. Um, whether it's six, seven hours a, a week.
Okay.
I would assume that, you know, it's gonna be a series of things that she's gonna be helping, helping everyone with, and probably the, you know, some of the scholarships and those types of things are gonna start, but it's really gonna be the class scheduling at first, and-
Yeah.
And then I could see, I could see where, if we're, if she's helping with the banquet, well, she's gonna stay through the banquet, for sure.
Right.
Be able to assist for that first time through, I would say.
Yeah, good point. And scheduling, we are looking at scheduling, our schedule on, maybe not with the students, but start building it already in November, here in December, and making sure that we have it ready to go.
Right.
So when we do have it in January, we start, end of January, start getting the kids to register, we have things set with it, so.
If this is a year-long mentor position, at what point will the board, or what, what point will administration know the plan moving forward to eliminate the mentor position next year? How will that plan be put into place?
It just, it, we won't have it. It won't, because she will-
But you're gonna have to allocate what she's doing to certain people, so they don't, so it doesn't fall through the cracks.
Correct.
So you're gonna have to plan for that.
So, and I think that's where you, the people that I just mentioned all have a, a hand in it.
Now take on that role.
And with this mentor, would, would, yes, would be able to help them all have a hand in it, so things don't fall through the cracks. You had people here that were here for many, many years prior to this, that everyone had some experience, and it, it just flowed, because they did not let it fall through the cracks. Because they were experienced with the history of what we were doing, so.
I think the potential for the, the DPI funding is a big positive for me. We have heard as a board, you know, you said no new positions after, after the referendum, and to me, as long as we can show how we're paying for those positions, and, you know, with the potential for the grant funding. And, uh, and I, I have to agree with what we heard from the, the public was this is a big deal for juniors and seniors and the scholarships.
And making sure in the scheduling that kids get what they need for, for classes, so they are credit efficient.
I make a motion to hire Becky Shear as a mentor. Um, November through the banquet, six to eight hours a week. Is that fair?
Yep. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
So we have a motion and a second to hire Becky Shear as the counselor mentor. Is there any more discussion?
Was there also something else we didn't choose to be part of for our school?
Right. Um, so when you're applying for, um, schools right now, if we would have opted into this direct admit, um, they say that the schools that hopped into that, it's, it's really a streamlined way of applying for schools, the UW schools. Now, not all the UW schools went in, but- Now, not all the UW schools went in, but the ones that are in it, they said it's fill out one form and boom, you're signed up. And just for a note for the boys, you don't have to write a nice little paragraph when you do the direct admit, so they said the boys really like not having to write that.
Like an essay of slurs.
Like an essay of slurs. So, they said a lot of them don't like to do that, so. But that would be something that I would like to see our counselors look into is, you know, what's the pros and cons of that, but I think having Becky here to help with this stuff, I think is essential. I really do.
I agree.
That's the only question I have.
Okay. Any other?
So, are we going to expect a report from Becky on this, how that is going later then?
I would expect a report from Maya.
From Maya?
Yeah.
And just say how, you know, whether it's just a handwritten, and one of us says it, or if she comes to a meeting and just says, hey, this is greatly appreciated and, or whatever, this is where it's helping me. No, I'm talking about the direct admission part.
Oh.
I think they'd have to come and.
So, you think Maya would still be ahead of that then?
Yes.
Because if she's going to be heading it.
Yeah, I think that'd be better.
Right. So, is there any more discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of hiring Becky Shear to be a counselor mentor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, say no. Motion carries. Presentation of Region Five recognition.
Okay. Tom and I went to the regional WASC, WASB Region Five meeting a couple of weeks ago, and at that meeting, we had three board members be recognized. So, at this time, I would like to present to a certificate of achievement from the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, Boards Awards Level One to Dennis Rail for demonstrating a high level of commitment to Wisconsin public school students by participating in WASB professional development opportunities, so. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Also, certificate of achievement, the Wisconsin Association of School Boards Awards Level One to Holly Littner for demonstrating a high level of commitment to Wisconsin public school students by participating in WASB professional development opportunities, so. Congratulations. And also, Dave Klinsman was also recognized, so congratulations to all three of you.
Thank you.
Well-deserved.
Now, we have to accept some donations.
Okay, we have a number of donations that have come through in the last month or so. I would like to thank the FFA alumni. They donated the milk machine, just over $8,000. Greenhouse panels at $823, and a refrigerator that goes in the officer room in Mrs. Donnerbauer's back room, and that was a little over $1,000, totaling just under $9,000 to $900, so greatly appreciated, so thank you, FFA alumni. We also have an anonymous donor of $3,000 for record boards, track record boards. That is the handout I showed you there of what we're looking at, and these would be placed in the gym. Mr. Steigbauer is working on location in the gym, but that would be an updated, and be able, very similar to what we have in there for the conference, where you can just slide and be changed easily enough, so. And then the last one is a sitting bench that is out right by our picnic that was donated by Bucky Gardner. Would like to thank him for doing that and would, special thank you to the anonymous donor for donating that money for the track record boards.
So, we need a motion to accept the donations.
I need to accept the donations.
Second. Have a motion and a second to accept the donations from the alumni, from an anonymous donor, and from Bucky Gardner. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion carries. Principals report.
All right, so I have an opportunity to talk to you about some of the awesome things that are happening district-wide here in Loyal. Tomorrow, we have our teacher in-service. At this in-service, staff is going to be working on educator effectiveness and Ames Web training that is for 4K through 5th grade as a part of our Act 20 requirements. We are also hosting a financial literacy event called the Power of Planning that is taking place midday in the large gym. We are also continuing our HRS, or High Reliability Schools, work with our staff and discussing our model of instruction that was developed with members of our guiding coalition team. And then last week, we had a really cool event. We had a staff tailgate right before the football game that was well-attended. There were lots of laughs and great conversations that were going on between staff and their families, so very nice get-together. And then congratulations to our National FFA Convention finalist, Isaac Jacoby. Best of luck competing this week at the National Convention in Indianapolis. At the elementary level, 4K took a field trip to Kaiser's Farm. Students had a blast exploring the farm, seeing lots of amazing things and learning about the farm life. Red Ribbon Week is October 28th through November 1st. Last week, we hosted a playground painting event. The summer, we resurfaced the playground blacktop and pretty much started with a blank slate. Kids are excited for the new layout. There are lots of patterns and fun games for them to play during recess, so thank you, staff and students, for your help.
Excuse me, we didn't resurface, we just.
Resealed.
Sealed it.
Blank slate, it was black, that's what I meant to say, so. The new patterns are awesome, sorry about that. And then 2nd and 3rd grade went on a field trip to the LaSeal Center, LaSeal Tax Center in Spencer to watch the program, Mr. Sees Air is Everywhere. At the middle school and high school, tomorrow, we have parent-teacher conferences from 3:30 to 7:00 PM. Also, tomorrow night, we are hosting a regional volleyball game. Our volleyball team earned the number-one seed in the WIAA tournament, so we are hosting Bangor tomorrow, so we're looking forward to that. Just a quick reminder that if you do go to the event tomorrow, that WIAA sets the ticket price, so it is $6 for general admission, and students under 6 years old and under, accompanied by a parent, are $1. The event will not be livestreamed, otherwise we would have to pay a fee to the WIAA for that, so, and then no passes are accepted. Recently, we had the Student-Athlete Leadership Conference for the Clover Belt. I took five stu-, excuse me, students to Colby High School where they interacted with motivational speaker Craig Hillier. Craig is well-known as an author, and he travels around the country inspiring our young leaders. Our student athletes very much enjoyed their time and are eager to bring those leadership ideas and lessons to our student body here in Loyal. Mrs. O'Dean will be attending the Wisconsin Leadership Academy on October 25th in Madison with our FCCLA president. Last week, we also had our band and choir concert, and it was a great first performance. Just as an FYI, we also received our new risers this week, and Mrs. Minders and our students are very excited to have them, so thank you. One Act Play advanced to sectionals and will compete in Eau Claire on November 6th. Today, we had academic awards in the gym this morning, and it was very well-attended by our parents and community members. Way to go, students, and keep up those great academic achievements. And then also going on this week is the FFA National Convention, and we have a handful of kids down there with Mrs. Donnerbauer. Upcoming important dates, like I said earlier, we have in-service and parent-teacher conferences tomorrow. October 25th, we do not have school. November 4th is going to be Title and Family Night. November 21st is the last day of Trimester One, as well as elementary parent-teacher conferences, and then on November 22nd, we have teacher in-service and elementary parent-teacher conferences.
Thank you. Supers report.
Okay. We will continue, Admin will continue working with Neola on, in the Policy Committee on finishing up our student policies. I believe we meet in early November. We are looking at the possibility of, looking at this absent management system from Frontline. What it does is it will gather subs for us, or Mr. Steigbauer is very familiar with this, so I'm going to relinquish and have you just explain a little bit. We've been talking to a salesman for them, a rep, and really looking at easing the burden of finding subs from our middle school, Christie and Lindsay, so.
Yeah, so this absent management is a system that I used in the previous district that I was at. There are a ton of schools in Wisconsin that use this, and I would say there are several reasons why I think that we need this here in Loyal. The first reason is our current system is very, I would say, taxing on the people that are required to find subs, and oftentimes, when these calls come in, they're not coming in at good times, you know, they're coming in late at night or 4:30 in the morning, and our current system is we have our secretaries answering those calls at all hours of the night, and it's just, it's very taxing. So, this system is out there and it would alleviate some of that. So, what this system does is it just, it makes things very clean, so like if you are sick, you go into the system and you enter that you are sick. And basically, after that absence is entered, it'll kick it out to all of the subs that are in this system, and basically, a lot of the work is taken care of, you know, before we even get to school during that day. Now, there's a set time where, let's say, someone calls in sick and those absences are not filled, at 6:30 or 6:45 in the morning, it would alert, you know, our secretaries and administration, and then we would still need to piece it together, but what it would do is just make that time more consistent. So, every day at 6:30, we would know to check this, and if we don't have a sub, you know, then we got to start, you know, our other protocols that we currently do as well. I would say it definitely would help us with paper and alleviating some of that process and making those accurate, records a little more accurate. This system does link up very nice to our Skyward financial system and just makes everything very clean and it's pretty user-friendly. And then in the school that I was at, once we ended up getting this system, I'm a big believer in, you know, the two months that I've been here, we have great kids and we have great staff, and when we bring subs into our building, we're going to keep them because the culture is here and it's very positive and it's very great, and I just, we're going to keep them. So, like, you know, if they're subbing in other districts in the area and they come here, they're probably going to prefer our students, our school, over some of the other schools, so I really think that this is going to help grow our subpool, and currently, our subpool is very, very small. So, is there any questions that you have about this system or Frontline?
So, we have one more webinar or Zoom that we are looking at doing possibly tomorrow, including the district office, because they will have dealing with payroll because of sick time and things like that, so I want to just make sure that's established and make sure everyone is comfortable. Not to put you on the spot, but Mr. Hendrickson came from Black River Falls, did they have that in Black River Falls?
Yep.
All right.
So, there are several schools in our area that has Frontline or this absent management system. I would say the big one that we're going to pull from is Marshfield. So, Marshfield uses this, and I feel confident that our subpool is going to grow. Augusta also uses it, which I know is kind of a trek, but we don't know where those subs that they're currently getting live, you know, they could live in Nielsville.
Most of Black River came from Nielsville, too.
And then Black River Falls, it sounds like a big part of their subpool did come from Nielsville, so I would anticipate that we're going to, you know, get more subs from there as well.
Do subs sign up for this? Do they put their name into that?
Yep, so, so basically, how the rep explained it to us is that anybody that has signed up for Frontline, we would be able to pick and choose from and would see our notifications, but as a district, we would still go through our normal sub-protocols, like have them apply, do a background check, just to make sure that we are covered on our end.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Concession stand, so Suda has, Suda Plumbing has installed and completed the underground plumbing. Rock of a concrete will be in next week to finish, delay the in-floor heat and pour the slab. Met with Osterman, Brad and I met with Osterman Electric and Excel today and just discussed the electrical part of the project. This will be more of a spring because in not too long, they will be, it's going to cost you money. So, with the Excel energy of what they were doing, because it's a new service, everything will be free, so, and I'm just talking with Mr., or with Osterman, waiting to make sure we hit, when we get the building up, then we can, or a wall at least, so we can start going with that, so, and we'll work on that as we, as we go. The Power of Planning for the Future, presentation tomorrow, I believe 50 or 55 people are signed up for it. Managing your, and the presenters will be presenting, managing your IRAs and appreciated stock, purpose of wills and trusts and estate planning, presented by the Eau Claire Community Foundation, which is the foundation that supports our financial literacy program, and the Clark County Community Foundation, so they, they're the ones that are putting this on. So, we have staff, we have outside community members all coming into this, so very excited for this noon, we'll eat lunch, and then 12:30 to 1:30, that will, the presentation will be. Congratulations to the Loyal Greenwood One Act Play on advancing to sectionals and good luck. Congratulations to the music teachers and their students on a great concert last week. Congratulations and good luck to Isaac Jacoby at the Nationals this week. We have, like Mr. Steigbauer, several members went to Indianapolis for the National FFA Convention this week. Strategic plan, we are in the process of continuing accepting applicants or volunteers for the task force. We are just below 20 right now. That would be a combined task and educational action team, so we have till November 4th, we will run another Facebook page and a remind Monday to get them, just, we need to get more people on, all right? We will address this also Monday with students, all right? I think there's been one announcement, we'll get some out there and get some students involved also. We had a, one case of whooping cough in the middle school. Today, we found out this afternoon, alerted staff and sent home, sent information home through our elementary newsletter and remind. Clark County had sent us something and we just passed it forward, information about it, so. The last thing I just want to bring up, so Brad has gotten, and we'll talk about this in Building and Grounds, Bozen has kind of did a little.
Plan?
Plan up, yeah, of what that looks like out there, so I would suggest that we have a Building and Grounds meeting early, early November, so, other than that, that's, that's what I have.
Okay. We need to set some meeting dates.
So that's the other thing, real quickly. If you look, or hold it, you got meeting days right now, all right? If you look on where we're at for November and December and January, I would, I'd worry about November right now of when we will have that meeting. I believe it's Thanksgiving that week, because Thanksgiving is late, so just, so you're aware. Can we push the week earlier?
So we're moving it, right?
Yeah. No, you're cooking, didn't we tell you?
Bear charge a pie.
You're proposing November 20th.
I am, I didn't have, but that, that would work.
Well, better than before.
That's the Wednesday, is the 24th?
The 27th.
27th is the fourth Wednesday.
Yeah.
That's the Wednesday before Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving, yeah.
We're talking about the 20th.
20th.
23rd.
20th.
Anything else differently? Your 25th? There you go, the 20th.
25th is too late. 20th?
20th.
20th work for everybody. 20th, 6 o'clock, closed.
November 4th is joint meeting, right?
Yes.
And that's here there?
Here, gym.
At 7?
It's 6:30 or 7. I, I can't remember right now.
And that's Baird presentation?
Yep.
You want to try and do Building Grounds or you want to just get ahold of us?
Does mornings work for you guys?
Yeah. Yeah.
Hey. Not election day.
Okay.
Yeah, let's stay away from that one.
Something like-
Now you just got to get it organized and everybody, sure everybody's in place and going. Six or 7th, the Thursday morning?
We have Neola, don't we?
All right.
7th is Neola, policy.
9. You want to make it a whole morning? How long's it going to take to do the Building and Grounds one? However long you want to make it. He's got, he's got a, I don't think he's got blueprints, but he's got, maybe broken down of cost, everything, yes. So in other words, you think we can wrap that up in an hour? I was- No, Dennis?
Ours, ours never go in an hour. Last one took us three and a half.
You want to go Wednesday morning? Neola is what day of the week?
Thursday, I think.
The 7th. Why don't I just look right here? Neola, 9:30. That gives us an hour and a half.
We can do that.
So the 7th then for both.
So at 8 o'clock, you're saying?
Yeah, Building and Grounds, 9:30, Neola.
Anything else?
Think Cora, right?
Okay. Questions and clarifications from the agenda items. Does anybody have any questions or clarifications needed?
I don't necessarily have a question, but I want to say thank you for the counselor mentor. As a mom of a senior, that like really helps me relieve some stress in my, with everything going on in my, my senior. So that will greatly help, I think, to have her for just basic questions. So thank you for bringing that.
Thanks. Anybody else?
Colton, you got a question?
Yeah. You have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
You have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Say no, motion carries.